Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I now call the May 24th, 2021 meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. My name's Julie Jacobson, Town Manager here in Auburn. And I just have to go through our standard statements that we read while we're having a remote meeting. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, which suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely, as long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public may join the meeting remotely by telephone by calling 1-408-650-3123, and access code 235-235-861. Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235-235-861. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. And please note that each vote taken during this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. All supporting materials that have been invited to members of this body are available on the town's website, and the public is invited to follow along using the posted agenda. So before we go to the first agenda item, I just want to confirm that all members and persons who are anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Carpenter, I don't see on here. I don't believe he's going to make it this evening. Lionel Bertham?
Yes.
Tristan La Liberty?
Yes.
Scott Ren?
Yes.
Sarah Roughly?
Yes.
And, thank you, town officials and employees participating. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Assistant Town Manager CFO Ed Kuzinovich?
Yes.
And Administrative Assistant Sharon Kwiatkowski?
Yes.
Great. I also want to acknowledge that Adam Minar, a town planner, is on as well. He's going to be speaking when we get to the item on the Open Space and Recreation Plan update. So I just also want to mention for the public, we do have a public hearing on a petition by National Grid and Verizon for joint or identical pole location on Oxford Street North. And there's a call-in number for those who want to speak during that portion of the agenda, which is the public hearing. Is there a representative from National Grid and/or Verizon who's joining us this evening on this call yet? Seeing none yet, I will move on to the first item on the agenda. Tonight's agenda, following the election of May 18th, 2021, is the annual reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being consistent with the town charter to have a reorganization following the election. So I just want to take the chance to congratulate Tristan La Liberty and Sarah Roughly for their win last week. And Tristan, welcome back on the board, and Sarah, welcome to the board. We look forward to it. So what happens in this case is, as this is your reorganization meeting, I just run this just as part of the agenda, Sarah. So I call for the nominations and I'll walk you through it. And then, once a chair is elected, I turn it back over to that chair. So I will now open the nominations for chairman.
I'd first like to join you, Julie, in congratulating Tristan and Sarah on your elections. Great job, guys. And I'd like to make a motion to nominate Tristan Liberty as the chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Great, thank you. Selectman Ren has nominated Tristan La Liberty as chair. Are there any other nominations for chair?
I'll second his nomination.
Okay, seeing none, the nominations are now closed. So I just want to go through the process again. So Selectman Ren has nominated Tristan La Liberty as chair. And I see there is a second from Selectman Bertham. So now, I will go through a roll call vote. Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And Ms. Roughly?
Yes.
So congratulations on a vote of four to nothing. We have a new chair of the Board of Selectmen, Tristan La Liberty. That's awesome. Look forward to working with you. Anything we can do to help you through it? You know, we're all here for you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
It is really my pleasure to turn it back over to you, because this is the part I don't like. Having to do that part. So thank you, and congratulations again. And it's all yours, Tristan.
Thank you, Julie. I wish we could motion to have you continue to run the meetings, honestly. But with that, I will open up nominations for vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Scott Ren for vice chairman.
Okay, we have a nomination by Mr. Bertham of Mr. Ren for vice chairman. Can I second the motion as chair?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. And I will have a second by, this is roughly. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I will close the nominations. So we have the nomination for Mr. Ren by Mr. Bertham, seconded by, this is roughly, by a roll call vote. Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mrs. Roughly?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Congratulations, Mr. Ren.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
All right. So moving on to the agenda. Our first item is a public hearing by National Grid and Verizon New England, joint for identical pole locations on Oxford Street North. It's 6:00 p.m. It's now 6:06. Is there a representative from National Grid and Verizon New England?
Yeah, yes. Steve Soucy from National Grid. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Since there's a representative present, I'll entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So move. Second.
Our motion's been made by Vice Chairman Ren and seconded by Mr. Bertham by a roll call vote. Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
Mrs. Roughly?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. Can the representative please give their name and spell it for the record?
Steven with a V and Soucy S-O-U-C-Y.
Great, thank you. Can you tell us briefly why you're before the board and what this motion's about?
Well, yes. For the, you know, the school project here that is going on at Three Vinyl Street, you know, we have to move or relocate the pole five feet. It's an existing pole, but if we move it more than three feet by state law, we have to get a new pole petition approved. So basically, what we're petitioning is to move existing Pole 39 just about five feet back. That will allow us to remove a push break that's existing. It will make the pole line between 41, 39, and 38 straight, so we don't need that. And we need to upgrade the pole so we can have, install a new underground riser that will service the new school apartment building complex, which is now being constructed.
All right, thank you. I should have pointed this out beforehand, but members, you do have the petition and a map of the project in your packets. Do members have any questions at this time? All right, seeing none.
Just a question. There won't be any substantial periods of power outages for the residents in the area, right? Or will you do best to mitigate those?
Oh, yes. Yes, you know, basically, it should be live line transfer. If it is, it would only be a momentary thing, because we would put the pole up first, and then we would, you know, transfer the wires. It'll take several hours, but a lot of times they do that live line. And if it is, it'll just be momentarily. And if we do need, if they decide, hey, this is what we need to, you know, we need an outage, we'll notify people, and there's a notice process for that. Usually, just like we give notice of customers of a planned outage in their neighborhood. I think we have to send out notices. I think it's at least 10 days. It might be 14. I forget the exact number of days. But there's a set number of days that we would send out notice to the customers if we decide to do that. And most of these are done as live line transfers.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
All right. Do other members have any questions? All right, seeing none, I'll ask if there are any, if there's any public comments. I don't see anyone on. And to my knowledge from town administration, no one has reached out. But is there any public comment at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All right, motion to close the hearing's been made by Vice Chairman Ren, seconded by Mr. Bertham by a roll call vote. Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
Mrs. Roughly?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Ren?
Yes.
All right, and the chair votes yes. The hearing is closed. All right. Is there a motion regarding the petition?
I'll make a motion to approve the petition by National Grid and Verizon New England for joint or identical pole locations to be moved as put forth in the presentation.
Motion's been made by Vice Chair Ren, seconded by Mr. Bertham by a roll call vote. Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
Mrs. Roughly?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on. Communications, we have none. Board of Selectmen, general items. We have a transient vendor license application for Fork and Delicious. Nice name. And enclosed are the application documents and recommendations from the DCG. This had come before us last week, but we had postponed it until all members of DCG could look over the application. There were no objections. Is there a representative from Fork and Delicious on the call? Doesn't appear to be. It is up to the board to make motion to approve the license. Since the DCG has not raised any objections, I don't know if it's necessary to have the applicant here, but that's up to the wishes of the whole board, from my understanding, what we've done in the past. So. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, you know, I kind of feel like when somebody's applying for a new license, you know, they should take the time to come on. This is the second meeting now that somebody hasn't been on to represent. I don't know if it's their thought that they don't need to be on to represent, but we generally, I personally like to hear, you know, obviously, I know it's a mobile food truck, but, you know, like to hear what their thoughts are hours of operation, you know, where they're looking to spend their time, you know, what their goals are. So, you know, if it was somebody going for a renewal, you know, I'm more apt to, you know, just let the license continue. But I don't know, I just kind of feel like somebody should come on when they're applying for a new license in town. So I personally won't make a motion to approve this until I hear from somebody.
Okay. I will say that we, the reason that we didn't have them last week was because not all members of the DCG had seen it. It wasn't on their end for missing the meeting. But I also noticed that the town manager wanted to say something, so I'll recognize her.
Through the chair, thank you. I was just going to say what you just said. We had, two weeks ago, when we initially put this item on the agenda, we had reached out to the applicant through the, one of the members of the DCG, Lieutenant Lemon, because he had not had an opportunity to review the application. And under the town's bylaws, we do have to do a fingerprint query on these licensed applicants. So we just wanted to make sure that was done. So we had told the applicant not to come to the last meeting. And I admit, I don't know if the applicant was contacted last week, because I wasn't here. Sharon, do you know if anyone reached out to the applicant during the week?
Yes, Rachel had reached out to them after the chair, Mr. La Liberty and Ed met on the agenda, and we knew it was going to be on.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
It was supposed to be here.
Okay, thank you. So to Mr. Bertham's point, so he, this particular meeting, he was asked to be in attendance. It sounded like he was going to be, and for whatever reason, is not on this call.
Okay. Sharon, would we have to take a motion to table this item till our next meeting in order to avoid approving or denying it tonight?
You can take a motion to table. It's not a public hearing, so there's not, it wasn't advertised for a certain time. So if you chose to just table it to the next meeting, you could do so.
Okay.
I'm through the chair. I mean, I appreciate the fact that the vetting was done by, you know, the departments that be in town. But to Lionel's point, this application really, it actually says that it's going to serve Tuesday through Fridays in Worcester, and that events in the surrounding towns. So it really doesn't tell us too much. So I certainly appreciate, I mean, I'm not generally unopposed to this, but I think I side with Lionel that I would like to see the applicant, just to know more about what business they're going to be doing in town.
Okay. Other board comments? It sounds like we're, there's.
Mr. Chair, does anyone have knowledge of this person? That should we have, would it be possible for somebody to reach out and see if they can get him on the line? The only thing I'm thinking is, you know, I stand by, you know, not doing it if we can't get the person on the line. But I also know that next weekend is Memorial Day weekend, and for food trucks and things like that, it is a big weekend. So does anybody know this person personally? Or do you, you know, maybe through the chair to the town manager, would it be normal for us to give a courtesy call to see if we can get him before the meeting's over?
Sure. The only number I have for this individual, by the way, I'm not familiar with him personally. But there is a phone number on this application that I'm happy to call. I can put myself on mute and reach out. Again, we did have Rachel in my office reach out and speak to him last week. And he was aware even two weeks ago that we were putting it back on the agenda today. Pardon me. So I'm happy to mute myself and see if I can reach him on this one number.
Is that something that you think we should do, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, if the town manager's willing to do that, I think we can, I don't know if we've done this while on a Zoom call, but we can go into recess to give her the chance to do that and then see if there's a response.
We can probably just move to a different item for purposes of the meeting.
We can. Sure, we can do that, too. It's not a long one, so that's why I was suggesting recess. Yeah, we just have the reappointments. And then we'll meet the town manager again, but I'm sure I can speak to some of it. So if she's not back by then, but yeah, let's do that then. So let's hold off on Agenda Item 5A. And I have a motion to move up Agenda Item 5B.
Motion moves to move up Agenda Item 5B.
Second.
I'm sorry, can we do 5B 1 and 2? Oh, never mind. They're both under 5B. I'm sorry. Motion's been made by Mr. Bertham.
Second.
Made by Mr. Bertham, seconded by Vice Chair Ren by a roll call vote. Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And Mrs. Roughly?
Yes.
All right. So under Agenda Item 5B 1, Finance Committee members Edward J. Coleman, who would like to be reappointed, and Mr. Coleman, yeah, to a term expiring June 30th of 2024. Since it's a reappointment, Mr. Coleman is not here. Because the board is usually not asked members to come in if it's for reappointment. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Coleman to a term that expires June 30th, 2024, to the Finance Committee.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Bertham, seconded by Vice Chair Ren by a roll call vote. Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
Mrs. Roughly? And Vice Chair Ren? And the chair votes yes. It's unanimous. Moving on to 5B 2. Zoning Board of Appeals, members Peter E. Jones, Richard G. Cussy, and Robert J. Tatro would like to be reappointed to the ZBA for terms that would expire in June, June 30th of 2024. Once again, members that are being reappointed, we're not asked to come in. So do you members have comments or a motion?
I'll make a. Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Jones, Mr. Cussy, and Mr. Tatro to the ZBA for a term that would expire June 30th, 2024.
A second then.
All right, motion been made by Vice Chairman Ren, seconded by Mr. Bertham by a roll call vote. Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
Mrs. Roughly?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. At this time, the town manager's back, so I'll turn things over to her.
Hi, thank you through the chair. So I did reach Mr. Winchester on the phone number that was listed. And he would like, he said he appreciated the board wanting to give him the opportunity to speak. He wants to make sure he has all of his paperwork in order. So he asked that he be put on to the June 14th meeting, which is the next meeting agenda. He just wanted to make sure that the police department didn't need anything further. Apparently, he had provided some documentation for the fingerprint query, and he's just waiting to make sure that everything is all set. So if you could kindly put this off until June 14th, if we have all the information from Mr. Winchester and the police department, we can bring it back to the board for consideration.
Okay. Is there a motion to hold?
I would make that motion.
Mr. Bertham? Okay. Yeah, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion to.
I wanted to give you your first second.
Okay.
You.
Motion's been made to hold Agenda Item 5A, Transient Vendor License Application for Fork and Delicious, to June 14th of 2021 by Mr. Bertham, seconded by Mrs. Roughly. By a roll call vote, Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
Mrs. Roughly?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Moving on, we have gift acceptances. There are none. Proclaimations and recognitions, we have none. Town manager items, we have the update on the RFP for property acquisition by the town for the police slash fire slash ambulance public safety complex. So I'll turn things over to our town manager again.
Great, thank you. Thank you through the chair. Yes, we want to provide a brief update to the board on the RFP for the property acquisition for the potential public safety complex. As you know from prior presentations, the town, in order to move forward to determine what the total cost estimate would be for this project, we need to know how much the cost of the land acquisitions. And given that the town doesn't own any land that is sufficient to support a public safety facility, we're required to follow Chapter 30B under Mass General Law, which means that we have to go out to bid for the acquisition of properties. So the town just can't say, we like property X, and we're going to make an offer. So under Chapter 30B, we have to solicit bids from property owners. So we did put the, we put this RFP out into the central register. I put in for it, I believe, just about two weeks ago. So it would have run in the central register either last Thursday or the Thursday before. So it's definitely been in the central register, which is a requirement under 30B. It will also run in the Auburn News on two consecutive dates in June. The proposals are due to the town on June 30th. The reason for that date is you have to back into that date for all the advertising requirements. So you have to advertise in a newspaper of circulation in the town a minimum of eight days prior to the bid closing. You also have to have a pre-bid meeting. And then you also have to advertise before that second time, at least one other time. So when you add it in all the dates for this, we push the date out to June 30th. So we hope to get some proposals then. We are reaching out to some brokers to just let them know that this RFP is out there. Some people have asked why we don't post it, the actual RFP on our website. And the issue is that we are required under Chapter 30B to maintain a list of everyone who requests the RFP. So if we have to make any kind of addendum to it before the proposals are due, we're then required to reach out to anyone who took a copy of it. So we don't want to miss somebody by putting it out on the website. We wouldn't know who to reach out to. So people are welcome to call our office or email our office, and we can send it to them electronically. We just have to make sure that we have their name, contact information, and email address so that if there is an addendum, we can get it to them. So it is available electronically. You just have to call the office or come into the office and pick it up. As you know, we're open regular hours now. So that is the process. We're hoping we get a bid or two on this, so we have some land options to look at. And from there, we can start some public meetings, which we are in conversation with the Public Safety Advisory Committee on having some public meetings. Potentially one in June, just to remind everybody that this process is underway. And then again, likely in July. And then, according to the schedule we have provided to all of you, we would probably be looking for the board to take a vote in August if the board desires to put a ballot question on a special town election ballot for sometime late in September for a debt exclusion vote. But we don't want to bring that to you until we have a total project estimated cost.
All right, thank you. Do members have any questions for the town manager at this time?
There's been no responses on the RFP, right?
Correct. There have been no responses yet, but I would say it hasn't gone in the Auburn News yet. And it's only gone in the central register, and you don't always get the property owners looking in the central register. So we are actually reaching out to some brokers that we're aware of that do a lot of business in town, just to see if they might have any clients that are interested in bidding. And we're also going to let the Auburn Chamber of Commerce know in case there are any business, industrial, commercial property owners who have property that they may be interested in putting up as an offer to the town. So I think that's why we wanted to make sure that we have plenty of time, Mr. Ren, for this, to give people time to put something together. Because the advertising deadlines, even though we get them in two weeks in advance, sometimes you just don't see them for a couple of weeks. So we'll do a lot of outreach, and hopefully, by mentioning it tonight as well, we may get some property owners that realize that this is out there and they're interested.
Thank you.
Do any other members have any questions? All right, seeing none, move on to Agenda 6B, which is Open Space and Recreation Plan. You'll see the paper in your packet, and I'll turn it over to the town manager again.
Great, thank you. And I also had asked Adam Minar, a town planner, who's, you can see his camera is on right now, to give an update through the chair to the members of the board and the public on the Open Space and Recreation Plan, what we're doing in this upcoming meeting that we have in June. So I'm going to turn it over to Adam.
Hi, thank you. So I'll just give your brief background. Some of you may already be aware of the products going on. About six months ago, the Open Space Committee was formed to begin the process of updating the town's 2014 Open Space and Recreation Plan. The current plan expires November this year. So it's important to have updated plan that helps with along the town pursue certain grants. You kind of need this plan for a certain grant, especially through DCR. So the current status is the Open Space Committee is. So uh the current status is the Open Space Committee has been meeting monthly uh about past six months to work on the plan, kind of develop um strategies to go forward and what kind of goals and objectives the town should pursue over the next seven years and beyond. Um there was a survey that was conducted this this spring. About two hundred people took the survey and we had some good response, some good ideas. So um the flyer you received in your packet is an advertisement I'm putting out on the town's website, social media, posted around uh place around town um for a kind of a public meeting, kind of a public forum. Um as an opportunity for um for feedback, for public to provide the committee and myself some feedback. Um I'll be doing a presentation um and to explain what the plan is, provide some of the survey results and again to just gather some some more input. We wanna know where the town wants to go, what kind of projects we should look into, um what we should study, what we should pursue. Um so yeah, that's kind of where we are. The plan is to have the a final draft of plans with to the state this fall, so we've got all summer really to to work on on the final product. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Do members have any questions? Or comments?
Just a comment um initially on the the survey results. It looks like there's a pretty good appetite for more walking trails and hiking trails in town. I personally hope that the residents were gonna ask to make package hog eighteen holes, but that's, I think I'm the only one there. Um but no, we've made some good progress in the Open Space Committee. Um Adam's done great work over there.
Other questions or comments? Okay, seeing that, I just wanna add, um I've seen some comments about anything water related. Of course, we had the swimming pool that uh we discussed a while back. But um there's always talk of doing something uh with Rotary Beach. I imagine you're going to get input on that. But I just wanted to thank you, Adam, for all the work that you've done with uh the surveys and with this. Uh I took the survey and it it was really well done, so thank you for all the work you put in.
You're welcome.
Mister Chair.
Mister Bertham.
Um was was there also um any talk about with with the new Goddard Park that there might be uh some area near the water there uh that that eventually may be for families? Or i- is that um something that that I'm dreaming up?
Uh through the chair, I'm gonna I I wanna answer a little bit and then turn it to Adam, because coincidentally, we had a meeting today with CMR PC because we're still moving forward on some of the uh plan design options for Goddard Park. And we actually talked a lot about uh the water primarily not being for swimming, but for being for other utilization at Goddard Park. But I'm gonna let Adam explain some of the concepts that we're looking at right now, and then of course, we need to look at cost of these.
All right, uh thanks Julie. Um totally. Julie, so we met with CMR PC today, um expect to have a report of the results of the Goddard Park survey that was done this past spring um within the next month or so. Um some of the the highlights were a walking trail um around um the pond um through the park. Um other amenities would include possibly some kind of a dock or a deck along the water. It was, you know, pick benches, tables for people to sit and enjoy the water, to fish. Some improvements, um the other damn kind of an overlook uh with historical signage. You know, the Polaris missile is there as well as a model of the original Goddard Mark Rocket. Um spoolsing those up, I think uh would be higher on the list at some point, as well as possibly a fountain in the pond, which um aside from being a scenic aspect, would help improve the the water quality by injecting oxygen into water. Um it's kind of a the the, I'm not sure how well the water flows in that area, but the the now the the fountain will help up that aspect. Um and uh I mentioned at the meeting this morning, uh it's coming up on the hundredth anniversary of the the Goddard launch. Um it's five years away, so um those improvements will be timely to celebrate that big anniversary.
Fantastic, thank you. Mister Bertham?
No, I was just saying. Updating that uh the plans on the Goddard Park.
Great, other comments or questions? All right, seeing none. Um thank you, Adam, again. Appreciate it.
Mister Chair, if I could, I just, while we have Adam, I just also wanna thank Adam for all the work he's doing on the MVP grant uh and the work that we're doing on the Leesville Pond. I know last week uh at one point, it was supposed to be a Saturday back in March or April, and we surprisingly had snow at that time. I think it was in April, so we had postponed it till the weather was better. And on Election Day, uh Adam and many of our town employees um and department heads and division heads uh spent time down at the high school uh educating the public and doing outreach on of water quality, water quality control, Leesville Pond, how to help the community. Uh and they just, they did a great job. They put a lot of work into it. And I think the end product is gonna be uh excellent, definitely worth doing. But I just wanna acknowledge Adam's work on it. You know, Bill Coyle, Joanna Paquin, Jolene Coyle, a number of people were there during Election Day just to provide outreach to the public. So I wanna thank Adam, and Adam, is there anything you wanna add about it? I think you had, you know, a decent turnout, because we we did it with the election to try to get more people there.
Yeah, I think we did have a a good good turnout. Um I think pairing with the election really, really helped draw people. There, you know, there's currently, if you if you walk by the 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 workshop, as it was called, there was many signs up. Um all those, all the signage is now at the library. She calls up a nice display, if I as you walk in, you can see all the signage. Everybody that um stopped to talk to us seemed engaged, willing to learn about ways to improve water quality. So I think it's gonna be a real benefit for not just these old pond, but for all the water bodies in the area.
Thank you again, Adam, and thank you uh Mrs. Jacobson for bringing that up. I should have mentioned it, because I did say hi to you, Adam, on the uh on Election Day, and I was good to see you there with everyone else doing that. I'm glad you had high turnout, because our election did not. Um but it's good that you were able to reach out and talk to people. That, and we'll move on to uh table items, and we have none. And board select member items. So uh for those members that were here at a last meeting, um and now we'll add uh Sarah to you, you to this. Our former chair, Goodrich, brought this up. Their request to begin changing uh the board's name to a more gender neutral term uh from selectmen to select board. Uh we noted that other communities have already gone through this process and started it uh or actually have gone all the way through it and now have uh the new name. It had wide support from the board at that time, so um uh I think this is something that it looks like we're going to pursue. Uh I don't know if we necessarily need to establish a whole subcommittee on this, um because I don't know what the process is. I don't know if uh one member wants to spearhead this. Uh so I'll turn it over to members who have any ideas or suggestions on what they'd like to to do with this um item.
Mister Chair. I I personally uh am all for just uh making that change. So I think it's just a matter of uh finding out uh from a legal standpoint or a charter standpoint uh what steps need to be done uh and then uh just getting those uh in in action completed. And uh I I'll go out on a limb and say, I think the the whole board's gonna be in favor of it. Um so um let's let's do whatever we gotta do to get it started. If if you feel that you want to do a a subcommittee, you know, I'm happy to get on that subcommittee, but I I don't think it's not necessary. I think it's just a matter of finding out the uh protocols and procedures.
I would agree with you. So with that, I guess I'll ask the town manager, do we um the process for going about finding, or really for finding out what this process is, do you know if we'd need to consult town council or or what the steps might be?
I I'm not sure what the steps are, so let me look into it and then report back to the board. Uh see if we can do a little research and find out what the process is. I I know, I I believe anyway, the the former chairman Goodrich had mentioned that there may be a legislative process that would be involved. I I think there may be a a need to consult with town council on this as well, because the charter does have certain language in it. So I I don't know if the process that's handled on the legislative side would then uh enable us to do that through the charter. Uh it it might, so let me have an opportunity to look into it, and I can report back to the board on what steps you need to take.
Uh do other members have any comments? Uh Mr. Ren, I saw that you.
Uh yeah, I mean, it that's a really good point, Miss Jacobson. Because it may not be so simple if we had the an amendment to the town charter. I can't, I have to imagine there's no small feat. Okay.
That's correct, uh correct. An amendment to the charter is it is a very lengthy process. Um it's not that easy to just, but a a change of name may not be something that would require an amendment in the charter.
To that, guys, so.
That, so that's, I I just don't know the legal answer to that, so we'll find out for you.
Okay, all right, very good. I I just request that we keep this on until we get the information that we need to, you know, know how we can move forward with it.
Great, we'll get on it, thank you.
Mrs. Jacobson, do you want that in the form of a of any motion? Actually, we don't have vote on this item, but um I I don't know if you actually need it and hence one.
Okay, I I'll just, I I don't think you need to make a motion. I'll just uh let you know that we will definitely look into this. We'll talk to town council, we'll look into it legislatively, and we'll report back to you once we get all the information.
Great, thank you. So is there anything else on that before we move on? All right, seeing nothing. You have the minutes from our April twelfth, twenty twenty one meeting. Are there any corrections or omissions? Seeing none, I'll accept them as read. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mister Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, do we wanna let Ms. Roughly make her first motion?
Sure, I make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that.
All right, motion to adjourn's been made by Mrs. Roughly, seconded by Mr. Bertham, by a roll call vote, Mr. Bertham.
Yes.
Uh Mrs. Roughly.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ren.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, it is unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Night.